What this is gonna cost, uh, phase one's gonna cost seven thousand. We don't know how many phases or it's gonna be. I'd like to know in total, just the ballpark, not an exact number, a ballpark on what it's gonna cost.
And every problem is, uh, the companies that install these doors in our local area that we pushed out to do not, uh, they don't install the electromagnetic locks.
I'll get you, I'll get you some people. He knows.
We're always, always open to any suggestions.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I've got a question. If we were emergency spending at seven thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars, the only number I see on a bid is eight thousand six hundred and fifty. I don't see anything in the organs I got that says seven thousand four hundred.
It's on the first page. Six and two.
No, yeah, I'm talking about a bid sheet. The bid sheet that's in behind that is for eight thousand six hundred and fifty. If, if there's a phase that I didn't get.
Yes, sir, look on through there. It's seven thousand four and forty-four.
I read a glass bid. Seven thousand four hundred and fifty.
Forty-four dollars.
Okay, I don't have that.
It should look like this.
Okay, I didn't, I guess I didn't print it. Or state it wrong. Okay. Um, I agree with Chris, I'd really like to know which, uh, what's the end total of this? Because this is not in our budget anywhere that I remember. Is it, did we all?
No, wouldn't be.
We're, we keep, I'm half, we're already budgeted, over-spending our budget for the year for, for some of it, for legitimate stuff, buy trucks and some street work, this, that and the other. But if you had known ten grand at the time, you know, we hadn't had our payroll meeting yet, uh, at, at what point do you run out of money? It's not a bad thing, but we've just had a plan.
It's in the budget of our general maintenance, but I don't know how much over we have, that's what's coming out.
That's what's in the general.
So I don't know if we had the extra left over.
Do any more, too much things for me.
You also, they call for money, man. I'm gonna talk out loud so we can hear you. All right, so are we? All right, we think there's any more discussion. Wrong call.
Are you in?
No.
Ask you?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Lindsay?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
Simmons?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Motion to approve. Ten more. Now, what we, what's that? Five and three? Okay, done. Five and three?
I'll say thirty. And six. Suspended rule. Just right, right, right there.
Right, right, right.
Motion to suspend the rule, it doesn't pass. Now, it doesn't affect the entire order of the county's fees.
We just have to go through this process.
Okay.
So what's the next step?
That would make this the first reading.
All right, okay. All right. Thank you. And, resolution number ten twenty. This one is introduced by the mayor.
Resolution ten twenty, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, awarding the bid for the purchase of one twenty twenty F one fifty regular cab pickup for the public works department.
Motion to approve. Second, second, I read for the discussion.
Is this to replace an existing truck?
Yes.
Okay, so it's to replace an older truck that's, all right.
Forceful ones in favor, use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, use the voting sign of nay. As have. Now we are ready for resolution number eleven twenty, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution eleven twenty, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing a budget reappropriation and awarding the bid for the purchase of one twenty twenty F three fifty, cab chassis pickup for the public works department.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, I read for discussion. Those in favor, use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, use the voting sign of nay. As have. Resolution number twelve twenty, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution twelve twenty, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, supporting participation in the Main Street Arkansas program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Both, I move in second, those, I read for discussion. Those in favor, use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, use the voting sign of nay. As have again. Now we have the force resolution number thirteen twenty, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution thirteen twenty, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for online code services from Mutico.
Motion to approve.
Second.
You move then, second, I read for discussion. Those in favor, use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, use the voting sign of nay. As have again. Resolution number fourteen twenty, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution fourteen twenty, a resolution of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, authorizing a maintenance technician position, grade LS three, to the Camden Police Department due to the loss of the three oh nine program.
Motion to approve.
So moved.
Move then, second. I read for discussion. Just one question, chief. This is a position.
Yes, sir.
We've actually always had this position.
We, we do, years ago.
Years ago.
But that is a custodian position.
Right.
And there's a female in that position. And we had the Act three oh nine program through the Sheriff's Office for the last several years. And we've lost that program now, and she doesn't have the ability to do the maintenance in the yard.
That, that's the position I was talking about, okay. So the three oh nine used to do all the rest.
We would pick up, we would go to the jail and pick up an inmate Monday through Friday from seven to three, and he would come and be free labor for us. But when we, the county lost that program, I think there was, I think there was a three oh nine that got sent back. So it not only impacted me, it impacted whole county.
So you say you have a young lady in this position now?
It's an older lady that is a maintenance, she's a custodian, and she does all the cleaning. The three oh nine did all the maintenance in the yard now.
Outside. So you wanna hire another?
For maintenance, yes. Yes.
Is there any more discussion?
Well, I would just make mention, there's another twenty-five thousand on the budget, it just keeps adding on.
Thank you, sir.
Like I said, this one, this one's really not very optional, I would say. Pick the ones that you, that you can do and the ones that you have to do.
And that's it. Those in favor, use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, use the voting sign of nay. As have. You have other business to focus on?
Oh, I got two. All of them business?
Yes, sir.
Uh, first, I'd like to thank the, uh, work crews you have. Mr. Franklin, we've been working on some projects, the rain shut us down on it. But once it cleared up, we got a lot of areas cleaned up that we was trying to get cleaned up in, in my ward. And, and, and the city still looks good, but I really needed a little help there, but we were being hindered by the rain, and they got it taken care of, and I, and I'm really indebted to them, uh, for that. The, the people in there, that was complaining about it, they was real happy about it, and they wanted to tell me that they really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Now, you know what they asked me?
What they?
What about the streets? And, and I understand the rain.
I've got two here.
Yes, sir.
Uh, mid-April is when we'll start, I have a list of all the wards, I think. Uh, you have, you wanna go back and redo your list of the wards?
I wanted to discuss, discuss a couple of the streets on.
Mid-April, we'll start doing the streets that we're going around with you guys, talk about it, we'll start mid-April.
Okay.
And as was mentioned, we do want to do the streets. We need a few dry days, and so, and we can, we're out of control of that. Having waited out a little bit and, you know, to put something in it for the water to wash it out.
Understand.
Yes, sir.
I've, I've got two things. Uh, first, I'm gonna say I would, uh, make a motion that we amend our agenda to add an item on here to, uh, approve funding for the economic development services contract for twenty twenty with OPED. And, uh, I've got, uh, I've got a copy of a contract, last year's contract, that's virtually the same, other than, uh, maybe a change of address. I've got a twenty twenty contract and a twenty nineteen right behind it. I think some of y'all have seen it, I only have two more here, if y'all share those two. They're virtually the same, and, uh, there's a, I think, one little new program that's added on, I, I highlight or underlines the language that was changed from last year's contract. And I think it's time to go ahead and get on with the economic development business.
Yes, sir. About me?
Yeah.
I got it, saw you coming, I was already prepared, so what I did was, you know, I kinda heard the rumors about the meetings that were going on in the city to fund the economic development. Again, I asked Mr. Frye to look at the contract, and I tried to add some addendums, uh, to the contract, uh, to, uh, make it more Camden, uh, uh, and he was going to give me an opportunity to offer an alternative to the contract. However, with the contract that you do have, I do wanna highlight one of the things that I thought we needed to adjust. If you go to number twelve, this is one of the things, one of the areas that I, I gave to Mr. Frye, a list of things that I wanted to be considered in the contract. And so I didn't throw it away, I didn't throw away the idea of it. But I'm, I'm glad I saw y'all coming. So number twelve, look at number twelve, it says transfer conveyance of assets. In the event that OPED would cease operations, OPED agrees to transfer or convey to the city of Camden, the city, a pro rata share of all assets of the city corporation without any compensation. I, I was wanting to, it was one of the areas that I wanted to amend or to look at, and so I did not throw away the contract, I just wanted to offer an alternative to that particular, uh, contract that was more Camden. I, I, I have not been convinced, I'm gonna catch you, I wasn't convinced that that, all the good things that are happening in Highland Industrial Park is because of OPED. And I know that we give them credit for all the good that's happening out there, but in, in Calhoun County, I wanted to offer an alternative. So I, what I did was, I did, uh, offer an, uh, alternative until we get there, which would be resolution fifteen twenty. If we're going to amend the budget, do you have, did you already pass out the resolution?
I, I just have the contract.
Okay. Well, I have an opportunity for, uh, for a, one actual one. What my suggestion is, uh, is to ask you to consider that instead of just constantly giving away a hundred and fifty thousand dollars every year, that they will begin to wean themselves off of their dependency on just us to fund them. And if we would consider seventy-five, coming back to seventy-five thousand and setting seventy-five thousand aside to, for consulting, with that consulting budget, I would suggest that we would get a company that would consider bringing industry to Camden. And I wouldn't stop them, you're still giving them some money, which I understand, we gotta do that. But what I'm saying is that it would also give us an opportunity to, well, to give us an opportunity to focus more on finding jobs that the people in our community have the education and the wherewithal to work also. And so that's kind of the goal, I want to focus a little bit more on Camden. I did not run for mayor of any, of Calhoun, I did not run for judge, I ran for mayor of the city of Camden. And that's where I wanna focus our energies and our monies, we're at eleven point two five percent sales tax, with nothing to show for it, I want to focus our monies on our own community. I don't know how to say it any louder, but I do, I have here one that we could consider, which is res- resolution number fifteen twenty, and I want to say again, I'm glad I saw you coming.
Two things, one, I think that item twelve you mentioned there, I'm gonna say that's in the original OPED, not the contract. I'm talking about in the OPED, uh, organizational thing, that, because the city was the only thing that had any money to fund them.
No, they get money from the county too.
They do now, but I'm telling you, when OPED was founded.
They get money from somebody.
When OPED was founded, but that didn't mean that, it said that the monies that they had would come back to the city, because that's where their money came from, so. I mean, you can put it in the contract, that's what it is, but it's already in the OPED's founding document, where we agreed to, uh, that's what the tax is there for, because we didn't, it didn't matter.
That tax doesn't, that tax is no longer here, sir. We already spent that six, six million of the seven million dollars already. We don't have a tax that goes to them anymore. So six million out of seven million has already been spent, and I don't see what you see.
And I'm just telling you is that their organizational document, their articles of incorporation or something like that, if I, my memory serves me right, and that goes back twenty years. But, uh, if I think that that was part of the deal when we agreed to put that tax in, that monies, that if something happened to them, if they went to the funk, the monies would come back to us, which is where the money came from. Because when it was done, the county didn't have any money to put in it.
Why do they have a reason to go to funk if you're writing all of the salaries without accountability of expectation? I wouldn't stop a business if my check was already paid and I didn't have to prove any. I have to prove myself.
They have monies in the account, that's what I, I, I was down to. By my, I'm just curious, if you, wanna tell us who you got in mind that you want to give that other seventy-five thousand?
No, sir, what I wanna do right now, well, I would have to come back before you in order to give seventy-five thousand anyway. I couldn't, and it wouldn't be giving it. Now, if you wanna talk about giving away money, you've come here with a case, and I just checked with you my thoughts on why I think we should focus our monies on Camden. I, I don't understand this push to continue, they should, they should wean themselves off or bring in some business to Camden that actually gives them some type of callback or something, but all of it comes from the city and the county, and once you start producing, you can wean yourself off of your dependence. So if, if you have a problem, and I know some of you have a problem with welfare or what's going on with throwing money in this way or that way, and some of you have a problem, we come up with issues with public housing, workforce, all this, I have, I have a similar issue with giving money with no expectation and without accountability. I'm, if you look at this number fifteen twenty, take an opportunity and read it, if you'd be so kind.
I read it, I got it at four o'clock this afternoon.
Yes, sir, well, I saw you coming, I knew y'all were coming.
Yeah, that, that Wednesday deadline just hasn't fallen through too good.
Yeah, but I wanted to offer an alternative to, when I found out that you all were going to put them on the agenda without being on the agenda, that, that, if you go back to resolution number oh one twenty, it says the mayor shall be responsible for preparation of the council's agenda. Number two, it is to be, uh, any item that is to be included therein must be brought to the mayor's office during the workday by five P M. on the first Tuesday of the month. So with that being said, it would be easy to suggest that maybe, now, well, number three, during a council meeting, no item can be submitted for vote by council unless it has been included on the agenda. Now that we have amended, um, the agenda to, uh, include what you, to include it, I'm saying to you, I don't, I don't get, so, we have now a resolution, because we got someone, he was voted to amend the, uh...
We haven't had a agenda yet.
Oh, that's a...
No, it had been before the board.
All right.
Still need a second.
Second.
Better second, I guess now it's time for discussion.
Clarify, what, this is a motion to discuss OPED contract that you got down here?
To amend the agenda.
To amend the OPED contract.
To open up for the OPED contract. I don't have a resolution for it, I just have the contract.
Okay, well, that's what I was saying, it's gonna happen.
Okay.
All right. So, if, I, I'm offering, uh, a resolution until we, uh, or, I'm offering a resolution number fifteen twenty.
Well, two seconds.
Right, I think discussion right now, right now, it's time for discussion.
All right.
So that's discussion, that's OPED contract.
Or whether to amend these, we hadn't voted on the amendment.
We haven't voted yet.
Right.
Okay, so, is there any discussion about amending it? Those in favor, use the voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, use the voting sign of nay. Absolute, go ahead.
Okay.
I was wondering, has this, have they tried to bring this up before this year? Have they brought something to you earlier that we hadn't? You said you see us coming, I don't know if you're just holding it and waiting on us to say something, or?
No, what happened is, uh, this isn't the real city meeting, real city meetings are happening somewhere. And so I'm hearing some of the discussions of what people are going to do and how they're going to respond, how they're gonna do things. And so some of their whispering is loud enough for someone to come back to my office and tell me, well, uh, they don't want the three minutes, they wanna talk as long as they want to, so of course, oh, uh, a group is here tonight, and you say, oh, but it must have been the truth. So what I had, what I did was, when I, when I, when I understood that the meeting was going to be usurped and taken from me tonight, we went on and prepared a resolution to ask for a counter. I was waiting on their attorney to counter their offer that was given. And so he's going, I gave him a list of things that I would like to be a part of the contract that they're giving to us, and we're, we're discussing that. In the midst of that, someone says, we want our money now, and so we gotta either make, give them their money right now, or, and I don't consider it their money, and that's the thing that I, that I'm wrestling with. I consider the hundred, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's set aside for economic development to be used for economic development. That is, that is what I desire. So when I heard that someone, that some people were trying to usurp the meeting, that's what I mean by I saw you coming. Someone from there is leaking that they're trying to do things to undermine the administration. And with that being said, uh, we went on and prepared, uh, this particular resolution uh, until, uh, we can figure out which way to go. I was waiting to counter, and I'm not in a position to counter, so I'm asking for the seventy-five thousand to be set aside for just that. We're good tonight, thank you, sir. I, that's what I was looking for.
This is not a democracy, you can't speak.
Well, we had all those participations a little earlier, let me give it just a moment. Yes, sir.
Any other motion?
Well, I, I mean, I'm for OPED, I think they do a good job. When you mention Camden, first thing people say to me is military defense. I mean, you got people on the board that work out there that live in Camden. I mean, I think some people tried to do their own thing with the hemp debacle, that turned out terrible. We know what they can do, so.
So you, you believe that OPED is the reason that our defense is, is expanding?
I don't say the whole reason, but part of it.
Okay, all right.
I'll say this as nicely as I guess I can. Mr. Mayor, ever since you ran for the job, it's been very obvious from your speeches and the things you brought up that you wanted to get rid of the OPED funding, and you wanted to control that money. I mean, me reading between the lines, I've heard you suggest, uh, a pantyhose factory, uh, Hawaiian cheese shops, and, uh, the hemp thing, and then we had the, uh, uh, I'm trying to think, oh, the, the Westlake property thing over there on Comedian Street, we had the subdivision that was gonna get put in. And I'm saying, I, I've got much more faith in what I've seen OPED do, and not that it's perfect, not that it couldn't have been done better, but I got more faith in where that's going than what I've seen where you're going. So, I, I say, let's go ahead and put it in there, and if you come up with a good battle plan, lay it out there for us, maybe next year we wanna do it.
You said that to me last year, though. Last year we said that if they didn't produce by this year.
Who said that?
Um...
You said that.
No, on last year, he said, I thought, I apologize, don't even put words in your mouth. We listened to you, you do a speech last year that said that if they did not produce by this year.
Yes, sir.
That we would not keep paying the salary for that. And I trusted, and all I wanted at first was just time to offer a counter. That's what I was asking, plus, that's what I was trying to do. I gave a list to the city attorney to get a counter, right? That's what I was trying to do.
Okay.
Then when I found out.
Cause you done it last Tuesday, so you could have had it on, had it on you.
No, me, so what happened is, I couldn't, I wasn't ready, the, uh, today, but when I found out that you guys were plotting, that you guys were working to get this done today, I had to come up with a response to be ready for you. And I'm telling you, I saw you coming, and it just helped me to be better prepared. And so I'm grateful that you're doing it, uh, tonight, because it gives us an opportunity to have that discussion, but I'm also suggesting to you that I'm offering you a counter of seventy-five thousand, suggesting that we reserve seventy-five thousand with the opportunity to find something that will centrally consider the city of Camden. That's what I'm asking for, is a seventy-five thousand dollar, not to spend it, but to put the seventy-five thousand over to consult, and I'll come back with all the questions, to answer to all the other questions that you have. But I'm saying that at some point, somebody's gonna have to start weaning themselves off of some of that. At some point, economic development ought to develop economics to a degree. I, I, I don't, I don't know how to say it another way, so let me stop there.
Mr. Mayor.
Sir. Yes, sir, let me catch you, yes?
If I may. This, this didn't start last year. I, I've been on this board a while, you've been on this board a while, it, originally it started out at three hundred thousand dollars. And that went on for a long time. And I'm just saying that I haven't seen the results of the investment. You know, I've sat at this table, we've argued about things, and, and when you put something into something, you expect to get something out of it. And we got to the point to where it was reduced to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But here's where I am, I've always said it, and if you be truthful about it, I say I'm always for economic development. When the tax started, I said, why don't we put all these groups together? Instead of begging for, have a penny, a penny, let's get what we need, supply everybody. We talked about getting a multipurpose center and all this stuff, but the money ends up at OPED. I haven't seen the results, Kelly, I'm just being honest. Now, I know we talk from different standpoints, economic standpoints, representation and everything. It doesn't benefit me. And I just want something that benefits me. Plus, remember the main thing I said, and, and that's when I got them little ugly calls, I don't worry about security. I said that I want somebody at the table that represents me, and there was nobody at the table representing me. I wanna be represented too. I'm a human being, I pay taxes, I work. And therefore, it's not beneficial for me to invest my money in OPED. I don't, I'm not against OPED, I'm for economic development, but I need to see some results out of it. And that's all I'm saying here.
And my offer was just to do seventy-five instead of a hundred and fifty thousand in this particular coming year. So it wasn't to strip them of all of their monies, it was just to...
And, and you know, in, in a presentation format, I... And, and you know, in, in a presentation format, I could work for that. But now just to walk in here and say, you owe me a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you owe me three hundred thousand dollars, I'm not with that anymore. You know, if I, if I'm not investing my money right, then I need to do something about what I'm doing. But I can't, if I keep doing the same thing, I'm gonna get the same results. That's all I'm saying here tonight. And I've said it time and time and time again. This didn't start last year, this started with you and I in the previous two administrations. It was just come in and get a check, go, come and get a check, go. And I've been whining ever since, but nobody had been listening.
Yes, sir.
I, I would offer a translation to that, that the bulk of what you're talking about, come to get a check, whatever, and, and the way that worked was during the playback years, was he had OPEC Fred and OPEC Norm.
I didn't hear him.
But, but, but that's where they get, I'm just telling you, that, that's where they come and get the three hundred, and you wouldn't ever hear from them again.
Never heard.
If, if you want to say nothing got done, that first six million dollars that they spent, nothing got done, I agree with you. I, I just tell you in my personal opinion, and that's a very close, I'm not on the board, I just, but, but just watching what's going on and hearing what's going on, the guys that we've got on the board now, and, and James Lee running it, it's got the best stewards that they've ever had there, because they haven't had the money to waste the way the other groups did before they got there. Now, maybe I'm wrong, that's just my view of it, like I say, it's a shame that they didn't have the, the first six million to work with instead of the last million to work with.
And, and, and I don't hold you in contention for that, because we come from two different environments. But I want you to look at my environment and my situation sometime. And I just can't continue pouring money down a hole, and that's how I feel about it. Now, I, I don't want that to be the way it sounds, but that's the way I feel. Everybody not in an economic situation that everybody is sitting in here. And the money that I, I make on a daily basis, I wanted it invested wisely.
And let me thaw back on that.
Okay.
If you'll remember, if you'll remember, that's exactly the way I felt about the first ten years that darned them. Because obviously the money wasted, if you remember when that tax came up for renewal, who wrote the newspaper editorials of kill this thing because it's getting squandered? It was me.
And who said it should have been a sunset clause to start?
It, it was, and that's.
I said it.
Me and you both.
Right.
Me and my brother had an argument about that, but anyway, that, uh, there again, if we hadn't had that, it would still be going on, I guess.
Oh, yes.
Michelle recognizes you, Mr. Argu.
Thank you.
Uh, I understand you believe that you are getting nothing out of what goes on across the river. But I guarantee you.
No, sir, I didn't say that, I didn't say that.
Heard it. All the tax money that gets spent in Camden and the people that work across the river were to dry up and go away, Camden would be completely different.
I think you mistaken what I said. See, Lockheed Martin and, and a lot of the companies out there, they work for the government, I used to work for the government.
I understand how.
You understand, you know how it's, it works.
I work out there, I get it. What I'm telling you is they can pack up and move somewhere else and be gone by the end of the year.
Yes, sir. We did a.
That's why we got all these people coming in from California now to create more jobs here.
I understand what you're saying.
That are adding to our tax base that you think plays apparently no part of our city.
Mr. Lindsey can tell you about a company that used to be here called Molex. They walked in here, Mr. Lindsey, and they asked us for X amount of dollars. And I stood over on that side, and I said, they're not gonna stay here. They didn't stay. They took the money and went, went to set up somewhere else. But we couldn't get our money back. See, do you really believe that we have an effect on Lockheed Martin? The diversity here in Camden, the people in Camden have a impact on Lockheed by their workers and the people that work there? Ain't nobody going out there pinning any in the government and telling them, I need you to stay here. And you're gonna have to stay here because we get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city. It don't work like that, sir.
I understand that, and I'm not implying that it does.
Well, what are you implying?
I'm implying that the economic development that they give to Lockheed, Aerojet, and some of the other smaller companies out there.
That's not a small company.
Smaller compared to Lockheed or say Aerojet.
Okay, I'm with you, okay.
Uh, does have a factor, and if they can offset the cost of their employees by twenty percent because of a, a stimulus package that they get for OPEC, then they can hire more people. I'm not implying at all that the money's going to the federal government and that somebody's twisting.
Oh, no, sir, government don't issue money.
But I'm saying is if we can give them an incentive that pays for twenty to thirty percent of new hires pay for the first six months or years that they're working there, then yes, that makes a difference, and that gives people right here new jobs.
And I think you believe that. I worked for an international paper company for twenty-seven years here in this city.
They did us real right, didn't they?
You don't know what happens.
They did for seventy-five years.
You don't really know what happens, so that's what I'm saying.
God bless hell.
You, you know, I tell people all the time that it's not so much what you do for people, that's the main thing you do for people, in other words, you're still there. I work for a company that I like to work for, but I have to provide something for that company in order for me to stay there. It's, it's not somebody soliciting in my favor.
Are you finished, sir?
Yes, sir, yes, sir, I'm, I'm.
Yes, sir.
I've made my, uh, opinions on this quite well-known, uh, last year, I think. I gave a very long and passionate speech about, uh, regarding the companies across the river and right across the county line. Uh, let, let me just say this, uh, you know, the businesses are over there, but many of the people are here, you know, they're, they're here, they're in this town, and they want to see Camden succeed. It's in their interest that Camden succeeds. Uh, you know, for one example, the Main Street program that we just, uh, voted on for them to, uh, to continue on with that application process as a sign of support. Um, I can't divulge any numbers, but, uh, many Lockheed, Aerojets, uh, several of those companies out there have, uh, agreed to help with, uh, fund this Main Street program, uh, quite well, actually. Uh, I can't, I don't feel like I should be giving any numbers, I've heard a couple, but they're not finalized, so therefore I'm not gonna say anything. Uh, but they want, they want our town to succeed, it's in their best interest.
True.
Uh, I don't feel like the incentives that we give them, uh, for OPEC are necessarily unjustifying. Most of the incentives that we give them, and, um, normally I would say feel free to correct me if I'm wrong, since we got several OPEC board members in the, uh, audience, but however, I wouldn't want them to speak out of turn.
That's right.
However, uh, many of them are training incentives, so that they can train up, uh, uh, education and training incentives, you know? It's things to pay for S A U Tech to train them on new, uh, new things that they need for their workers to know, so that they can start out and start making them, uh, start doing their work that they need to do, you know, I mean, it's, which in turn goes to help support S A U Tech, which is also a fairly large employer. Any of those people live in this area. Uh, you know, it's, this, you know, economics, you know, economy is an ecosystem, it's not, uh, it's not just this, uh, we can't look at it like a zero-sum game. We can't look at it like if I'm giving them something, I'm losing something. That's not the way it works in the real world. Just that, uh, I think we should also look at Resolution sixteen twenty, I would agree, uh, as well.
We're gonna have to do one at a time if you want to introduce it, both of them have to be introduced on today.
I think one more thing we're, oh, I thought.
Yes, sir.
Uh, OPEC's characters have been kind of confused up here this evening, and I'd like to make a motion to reopen audience participation, let them at least defend themselves.
So, let me make a statement if you don't mind.
That was a motion.
Uh, well, okay, there's a motion.
I mean, it was a motion on the floor. That was a discussion. We voted to amend the.
Gene, it just discussed OPEC contract.
Right. Well, that resolution is nothing but proof, it was just a discussion of OPEC and, and.
We can approve the contract that's written.
With the resolution, council can, you got a resolution, and that was a discussion of OPEC and contracts, we got two resolutions, but now there's a motion to reopen. Okay.
It has been seconded.
Ready for discussion?
Unless the motion is changed, that's for three minutes.
All right, ready for discussion? I think that it's, I think that if we want to talk about OPEC, and we need to talk about OPEC, I think that we're getting the defense industry confused with OPEC.
Amen.
And we're using the words interchangeably. I think I said already that there is nothing that we are doing here that's making jobs come to Lockheed Martin. I don't think Lockheed Martin is coming by OPEC saying, do you think we can get a few more contracts? That's not how, I, I'm, and, and I, I don't, I don't see it, I'm not thinking that, that, that the government, the defense industry is coming through OPEC to get jobs to Lockheed, coming through OPEC to get jobs over here. You have training elements and other elements that are involved that we could participate in. But to say that OPEC is the reason that jobs are coming to Holland Industrial Park, I think that's a misnomer, and you can't use those words interchangeably. And, and so we have before us, uh, any more discussion on that particular motion? Those in favor, yous voting sign of aye?
Aye.
Those polls used the voting sign of nay?
Nay.
Nay, today.
Probably just be a, go by a little call, show of hands, yeah.
Which one you want, what hands or?
Show of hands.
Show of hands, those in favor, yous voting sign of aye? Hmm, those, those polls, you, I didn't lift your hand, but those are polls that hands are raising. All right.
Four, sir.
Yeah.
But, did you say four up or?
About. What was it, uh?
No, it's, it's gonna be five.
I thought it was five.
You've been looking at it, see.
Harder for, I thought I just.
All right. Uh, those of you who signed in, you're welcome to come up for audience participation. It's Michelle Williams, his only name you have on here, and we gotta open it up for everybody to not do a, do what they signed in or not.
Three minutes.
All right, you got three minutes to come up there and talk about whatever you need to shop them on.
No.
Audience participation, come on, talk.
Three, open it.
We got the timer, uh, I want to apologize for my group before I go, but I love Camden, I get excited about Camden. And I, I just can't understand how somebody can be so adamant, this is not the way it is. Because I can't tell you the way it is. The truth of any matter is somewhere in the point. I can tell you this, if it were not for those industries out there like we've already talked about, Camden would be about five thousand people, probably wouldn't have a fourth place, okay? You can go out early in the morning, it's endless line of cars coming from Camden in that direction. At night, it's an endless line of cars coming back. And I know those plant managers, and I know everybody well out there, they want to be wanted, they want to come to a community. Before Aerojet came, okay, OPEC is a bad word, but we talked to them, we made them feel welcome, we, they knew we wanted them here. We're talking about housing right now, we're trying to figure out what to do to make the people happy. They like it here, they like this environment here. And I respect our mayor, but he and I have different opinions. Like I say, that truth is.